At this point, we'll call to order the public hearing for the purpose of soliciting public input with respect to the proposed ordinance revisions relating to the Nogatuk Valley Regional Development Corporation. Anyone who wishes to address the board with respect to this proposed ordinance change, you should have signed up with a sign-up sheet. We'll give you a chance to sign up at the end if you haven't done it. There is a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Please state your name and address for the record when you begin to speak. I apologize for anyone's name that I butcher, but between the handwriting and some of the names, it'll be difficult. Our city sheriff is not here this evening because he is a DOT maintainer, and he was working extra hours tonight because of the storm that came through, so they've all been held over, so he's not here. So, with that, I will call -- and you have to be a Waterbury resident in order to speak tonight, so I just want to make that clear from the start. So if you're not a Waterbury resident, even if you've signed up, you're not going to be able to speak tonight unless you're an authorized representative of an organization that is located in the city of Waterbury. With that, the first speaker is Vincent Scognamiglio.
Vincent Scognamiglio. I wanted to talk about something else.
What's that?
I wanted to talk about --
Then you can come up during public speaking. This is just a public hearing for this ordinance, so we'll do public speaking when we start the meeting.
I have another speaker?
Yeah, there should be another one down there. We'll take care of it. Okay. Janet Tucalos?
I'm here.
Linda Balsis?
Linda Balsis is here. I'm not going to speak either.
Okay. Kelly Zimmerman?
I'm not going to speak either.
Is there anybody here who wants to speak to the ordinance? Okay, Mr. Mayor, did you want to -- you want to speak during the regular -- when we call it up with the committee of the hall? Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak on the ordinance then? No?
Mayor.
I think you guys are going to do it. We're going to do it as part of the committee of the hall, so... Okay, then with that, we will close the public hearing since it's 5 after 7:00. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, May 20, 2019. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a Silent Prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Alderman Brunelli.
Present.
Alderwoman Cavalo.
Present.
Alderwoman Cato.
Present.
Alderman DG Van Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman G. Comey.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy. Alderman Nugene.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Pranarowski.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you. And just for the record, Alderman Martinez-McCarthy is with her sister this evening, who is having a baby today, and she asked Sandy to be with her. And they went to the hospital this morning, and as of late this afternoon, the baby had not yet been born. So Sandy's still at the hospital, so please keep Sandy or sister, the new baby, and their families, and your thoughts and prayers this week. With that, the first item on the agenda this evening would be the election of a president pro temp with Ron Napoli's resignation last week. He was the president pro tempore of this board that's opened, and so I will open it to nominations for the election of a president pro temp, and I would call on Alderman Brunelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we have an Alderman on the board who's been doing a great job, very successful already, and I think will do a fine job in your absence as pro temp. I'd like to alter Alderman Victor Lopez for the position of pro temp.
Motion having been made, I would recognize Alderman Dorso.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my honor to second the nomination of Victor Diaz as the president pro tempore.
Lopez.
Lopez. Oh, Lopez, I'm sorry. Lopez.
Okay.
Let me say it again. Hold on. Let's do it two-over.
Don't go, Victor.
Race that off the table. Thank you, Mr. President. It is my honor to second the nomination of Alderman Victor Lopez as president pro tempore.
Thank you. Motion having been made and seconded, are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing now, I'd entertain a motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Therefore, the only motion on the floor would be the election of Alderman Lopez as the president pro temp of this board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries unanimously. You're now the president pro tempore. Congratulations. Did you want to say a few words? Alderman, did you want to say a few words? With the emphasis on few.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, for recognizing me. Really, an emotional moment. First of all, thanks to my fellow members of this chamber for your vote of confidence. I know that I saw my mom walk in. Mama, love you. I have to be honest with you. Just about six years ago, we did not have Latino representation on this board. And the reason why I say this, I say it very proudly, because look at how far we've come in just about six years. Also, the fact that a bilingual student from Willby High School can sit here and serve as president pro temp, I think it goes a lot on saying on where Waterbury stands, what we really are, and we truly can be the city of the future. So I was telling my son, I don't see my wife and my sons Jacob and Matthew, but Matthew was asking me, he said, "Daddy, what are you going to do as president pro temp?" I said, "Well, Matt, I'll be very honest with you. The president has been late twice in 12 years." So the reality that I'm going to do much, you know, it's really not there, but I will certainly be proud to continue the legacy of leadership. I must say, give kudos to Representative Napoli for his tenure as president pro temp, and hopefully I can be just as dedicated, as genuine as he was. So thank you for the opportunity.
With that, we'll go to public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board on any topic, again, if you haven't signed up already, I'll give you a chance at the end when I finish calling the list. Please state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. With that, Mr. Scognamiglio.
My name is Vincent Scognamiglio. I live at 327 Bucks Hill Road in Waterbury. Complaining about North Main Street sidewalk from Perkins up to Regan School. It's collapsing down into the swamp by the Jehovah Witness Building. Sidewalk got to be cleaned off where somebody gets killed. 189 Bucks Hill Road, there's a rock wall. Kids are walking by it. It's in a collapse. I think you should fix that before somebody gets killed. One good rainstorm, it's going to go. St. Michael's driving Bucks Hill. You've got to put a three-way stop in there to slow down the traffic. They put a sign in for people to see how fast they were going in the neighborhood last couple of weeks. I was standing outside, 63, 53. One car went by it so fast, it didn't even register. You've got to slow the traffic down. The company with us, the out-of-state plates for the school system, North End Middle School, Willby High School, out-of-state plates. Somebody's working in that school for the last three months, parking out-of-state plates in that parking lot. Also, the Alderman, years back, borrowed $2.5 million from the pension fund. That's when you went from Blue Cross, Blue Shield, over to Cigna. That was the money they saved. Now I guess the mayor wanted to borrow it. The Alderman approved it. I don't know if it was ever paid back, not to my knowledge. If you raise taxes in this city, you're going to turn it into a ghost town. And about the abortion thing with women, a woman has a right to do what she wants with her own body. Have a nice day.
Next speaker is Janet Turkot.
Good evening. Hello. The reason --
Would you just state your name and address?
Janet Turkot, 90 Larch Run Avenue, Waterbury, Connecticut.
Thank you.
The reason I'm here is to address the mayor. I tried to make an appointment with him. It's about the property off of Exit 17, the 19 acres that's going to be developed. I know what happened. I just found this out the other day, that the owners took the city to court because they denied the wetlands, so I'm here to ask for help. Again, in 1999, the economic development stated that open space is on the outside perimeters of the city and that -- I wanted the mayor to hear this. This is my appointment with the mayor. And that the reason that those lands have not been developed is due to wetlands and also steep ledge, lot of ledge and steep slope. Okay? In 1999, that was stated. Okay? Now, all of a sudden, things have changed. It's going to affect our neighborhood. If you recall, I went to the city in zoning planning the other day, and I had said to him about that there will be a lot of blasting, just like on Watertown Avenue, where there's blasting, where there's a big hole because they want the granite. The same thing is going to happen up there. There's going to be a 35-foot drop. You all know this. I know everybody heard this, but I have to -- I am very upset about this. It's going to affect the neighborhood. I don't know how long the blasting is going to go for. I mean, that blasting on Watertown Avenue has gone for 15 years. So I'm here to ask for help so our neighborhood is not affected. We pay the highest taxes in Waterbury. As I said, a woman I called, kept calling, your assistant, Maro, said, "Don't come tonight." Another woman, I can't remember her name, said, "Go to the Board of Aldermen." That's why I'm here. I'm here to ask you, Mr. Mayor, for help in this situation. I don't know what else to do. I went to city planning. I said, "I'm going to contact Channel 8." We really need some help out there. This land should not be developed. There's no way it should be developed for granite. And I know the owners are stating that it is going to be for a development, but he's only going to be putting five houses up there, and it's really going to destroy the environment. The animals are there, but mostly our neighborhood, and I don't want to be hearing blasting trucks, trees being cut, 19 acres for years and years and years. So I'm just asking, could you get a grant, something, purchase the land, make a park, you know, walkway? There's a lot of other land that could be -- make the walkway up to Tracy's Pond, go to the next land over on Lakeside Boulevard East. I'm here, really, no one's here with me, but I feel like I need help. Okay? We need help up there, and I don't know what else to do and where to turn. So I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, for help with this land. If you, you know, please help us. Okay? That's it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Linus Balsis.
My name is Linus Balsis, and yes, I am a resident of 25 Locust Street in Nogatuk, Connecticut. However, I am the president of the Knights of Lithuania Council 7 here in Waterbury, an organization that has been located here in this city for over 102 years, part of the Lithuanian community. I am speaking in regards to the lease contract proposal for the St. Joseph's School that also includes the convent building and also includes what is described in the lease contract as a residential building on John Street. Well, the residential building has not been on John Street since the 1920s. It's been on 85 Green Street. And if anyone has taken a look at it recently, I am wondering, first of all, one of my questions is, what plans does the city have for this building, as it is really an old bar and a club? Nothing that could be used for educational purposes. Second, is demolition of the building going to take place, or is that hidden somewhere in the lease, in some sort of a clause that would be allowed to, quote-unquote, "Oh, the property is not viable"? Does the city even know the condition of the building? The roof, the gutters, the walls, inside? We haven't been in there in a year and a half since water was turned off to the building. It's the St. Blaise School, the St. Joseph's School, and we're not able to use the building until just recently, when I went in to take a look at the condition of it. By signing the lease agreement, you're on the hook for this building. Understand that. 90 years of use of this building has been by the Knights of Lithuania and others in the Lithuanian community. We don't want the last vestige of the Lithuanian community taken away from us for the next two years by the lease, nor afterwards, especially afterwards. We don't want it gone. My proposal is such, strike this building out of this agreement. Save yourselves headache and money. At the same time, the parish of St. Blaise could get use of this building, as it does belong to them, without having to have special requests put in for the convent building that we hold the coffee hours at now and for all other meetings in that regard. We wouldn't have to go through the city for this if you take this out of the lease. The archdiocese is trying to slip you a quick one. That's exactly what's happening. Take a look. I have pictures on my phone, should it be necessary, to show you what that condition of this building is. And again, it's the last vestige of the Lithuanian community that would be gone. There is no Lithuanian club left on Green Street. There isn't, the other buildings are not there, and this would be the last. I ask the Board of Aldermen to take and look at this lease agreement and strike this building out. Save yourselves some money and do the right thing and vote no on this lease agreement. I am not against the use of the school for the city. In fact, for whatever purposes the city can find use for the school building, more power to you. It saves a building from decaying and going downhill for the rest of eternity. But let's be smart and not tie yourselves into a building that you're not going to use. I cannot see how you could use this for any educational purposes. And take that out of the lease agreement. The archdiocese has tried to stuff this down everybody's throat, thinking they're smart. Not very. Take a look, and I would appreciate your vote on this matter to not approve that part of the lease and take it out of there. Thank you.
The next speaker would be Kelly Zimmerman.
Hello. Thank you for your time. We appreciate you guys and your service. My name is Kelly Zimmerman. I am a resident at 133 Had Ed Road in Waterbury, Monka Hill. I actually came on behalf of a lot of residents to thank you. Thank you for recognizing and coming up with possibly voting on this ordinance for the recycling bins. Aurora Street, as Alderman Salvio and Alderman DG Van Carlo know from our association meetings, Aurora Street's a major concern with safety, and we have an issue with recycling bins being close and/or on the streets. So one of the other things I'd like to talk about is Aurora Street in general. Our sidewalks are crumbling, and some people have taken upon themselves to fix them. If there's anything we can do to possibly put that on a list somewhere to be looked at, it would be greatly appreciated, since it's used for the children to walk to school, to the park, and to and from the two bus stops that are there. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker, Tricia Norris.
Hi, Tricia Norris, 909 Hamilton Avenue. I'm here tonight because I'm a parent of the -- my kids go to Wendell Cross, and I'm just here to express my concern. I've never been to one of these meetings before, but I'm just here to speak up and just let you know that I'm concerned about where they're going to be going for the coming school year. I'm not really happy with the building. I'm concerned about the safety, and I'm really worried, again, like I've mentioned before, my children have asthma, and I've heard numerous times from numerous people that there's mold in the building, and I don't want to be held accountable for my children being out sick many times this coming school year because of the asthma or because of the air quality. I'm confused as to what I'm hearing. I'm hearing a lot of different stories from different people, different sides, about what's going on with the building, and if they end up going to St. Joe's. I'm wondering if, like, increased security could be put over there, because, again, safety is my biggest concern. My little one's going to pre-K, and my other one's going to first grade, and I just, I've been hearing a lot of things about lockdowns and shootings and drugs, and I really, really don't want my children to be a part of that. I'm very concerned about that. I absolutely love Wendell Cross, and I love the neighborhood that I'm in now, and I don't like the idea of where they're going, so I just wanted to come tonight just to let you know that I'm not happy with the school that they're going to be attending in the fall. Thank you.
Next speaker is Peter Versekas. Versekas?
Yes, good evening. Peter Versekas, 26 Sedgwick Street. You know, back in July 19, 2005, Archbishop Henry J. Mansell offered the Holy Mass in St. Joseph's Church that evening after the mass. He came over to the St. Joseph's Parish Center. He dedicated it because the parish at the time, the school was occupied by the city of Waterbury, and we had no place to go, you know? So we used it for meetings, and we used it for everything else, but a special part in that building is the chapel, you know? There's a chapel in it. We used it for prayer meetings. We used to use it for mass until one savvy priest, a couple of priests ago, a couple of pastors ago, he decided to take things out of there, the effects of there, the holy effects, and put them into the church. But anyway, we still use it, you know? There's still an altar in there, a special altar. It's a Lithuanian design in the windows, or noted Lithuanian stained glass craftsman, Bioninus, you know? It's a special building, you know? People go in there and pray. We have the coffee hour in the morning on Sundays and also on Saturdays, and we have other prayer groups as well at times, you know? But it's just a special room, you know? And, you know, I don't know, like I said, with this lease, which no one knew about it, absolutely no one in the parish knew about the lease, which is, you know, we knew about the school, and the school was okay because you're going to use it for the best utility you can, you know, because of the other situation involved in it. But another thing I have to, someone pastor, she can't speak, but it's kind of, I concur with what she says, you know? A representation to the Archbishop's office had told that any negotiations needed to be done by the pastor and the trustees. For several months, all we heard was the school negotiations. Last week, we heard three buildings were part of the lease without the pastor and the trustees involved, you know? Requesting, we're requesting that extension for the lease be, you know, be allowed so you could communicate, we could communicate with the archdiocese and, you know, the pastor and the trustees to come up with something better, because it's really going to hurt our parish. You know, the patrimony of the parish is really going to be affected. Some of the parishioners that come from Lithuania, you know, they can't understand it. This past weekend, at coffee, they said, you know, we said a prayer in the chapel, and it's just like, this is what they said, honestly. It's just like in Soviet Union, you know? The church gets taken away, and no one gets to use it, you know? And she says, "It just seems the same. It just seems the same." So, you know, it shouldn't happen in America that way, but we use that room. It's very important to us for prayer, you know? You can't always open up the church. That's for the mass, but for prayer, we use it, and it's, it should be respected as such. Thank you.
And the last speaker signed up is Marion Pelletier, but you're not from Waterbury, right?
I'm from St. Joseph's.
Okay. Is there anyone else from Waterbury who wishes to address the board? You want to speak now during public speaking? All right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Felix Rodriguez, 16 Rockhurst Drive. I simply wanted to congratulate my colleague, a good friend, someone who, for many years, Victor and I got elected at the same time when I was running for Board of Education, when Mayor Larry was running way back, and Victor was a hard worker, and I'm extremely proud of the work that you continue to do, and not only for Latinos, but just for the residents of this city. You're an inspiration. I encourage you to keep doing the people's work, and I'm really proud of you. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge you on behalf of the many kids that you inspire at Willby Grad. It's incredibly humbling and exciting, so congratulations.
Good evening, Mr. President. Neil O'Leary, 137 West Streets Drive. I'm speaking tonight during public speaking because I didn't want the parishioners from St. Joe's to leave before they could hear what I'm, my remarks, so I also plan to speak before item agenda number one, just to give you a fair warning. Thank you. So I am as confused tonight as the parishioners of St. Joe's. I have great respect for the Archdiocese of Hartford. I have great respect for Archbishop Blair. I have great respect for the people of St. Joseph's Church. I'm at a loss, quite frankly. I thought that the parish was in the loop. This has been, these discussions have been going on for a long time, but maybe what I'm going to say is going to set some of your minds at ease, and maybe it won't, and if it doesn't, we can talk more about it tomorrow morning or whenever's convenient. There are provisions in the lease for the full use of the, what is known as the convent building where the altar is. There are no plans for the city to inhibit or disallow any member of the Lithuanian community and/or the church to use that altar. We plan only to occupy the school or the convent during school hours, and after that, it's been made clear in the lease that we know that the Lithuanian club uses a room in there. We know that there is an altar in there. We know that there are some coffee opportunities on Saturdays and Sundays before, or maybe after mass, in there. It is not our plan or our intention to interfere with any of that at all, and that is in the lease. I, look, I don't know what to say as to why you haven't been made aware of that. As far as the home that Linus referred to, the legal description is still on John Street, so that must be why it's John Street. We have no desire to even walk through the door. We have no intention of walking through the door. We have no intention of using the building. Archdiocese wanted it to be part of the lease. I don't know why. We have no use for that building and don't plan on being even inside of it for any reason, and there's also that building, and the same language applies. We have, not only do we have no desire to use the building, we have no desire to disallow anyone else from the Lithuanian club or the parish or anyone that you want to go in. I know that you guys use that building. I don't know what you use it for, to be honest with you, but I have a feeling it was used as a makeshift when the Lithuanian club burned down for a while, and maybe it still is, but it is not our intention to even occupy that building or set foot in it. I don't, look, I'm trying to be respectful and polite. I don't know how all of this works. I know that Father Anello, who I have enormous respect for as well, is the priest now in charge of St. Joseph's, and we made a mistake a while back by not talking to Father La Vornia about something at C. Peter &amp; Paul's, and we made sure we didn't make that mistake here, but apparently we made that mistake here somehow, and I apologize. It's never been our intention to in-command the Lithuanian club, the Lithuanian community. The city of Waterbury has enormous respect for our Lithuanian population, not only in the city, but in the region. We have enormous respect for St. Joseph's Parish. We have enormous respect for St. Patrick's Parish. We have looked at this building in the past. We have used this building in the past for swing space, and we want everyone from the parish and the Lithuanian community to recognize and understand there will be no intrusion into your operations whatsoever from this arrangement. So I apologize to all of you, but, you know, we cherish our Lithuanian community here. I have many very, very close friends of mine who are I have many very, very close friends of mine who are Lithuanian and part of your parish or at least their parents and grandparents were, so. So, I just want to clear the air on that before you left. Mr. President, I don't have any other further comment on that.
Thank you. Did someone else want to speak? Thank you.
I'm Rosanna Keenche from 89 Bracewood Road in Waterbury, Connecticut. Good evening. First and foremost, I would like to thank the aldermen that are present here today that unanimously voted for the Wendell Cross expansion three years ago. We are extremely appreciative to have earned this grant and to allow the only remaining section without a pre-K through eighth grade the opportunity. The east end of Waterbury has continued to be overcrowded and obviously with the year behind schedule in the Wendell Cross expansion, we as parents are aware this needs to be implemented as soon as possible. As many parents, teachers and staff of Wendell Cross, I too have concerns. The Brooklyn area has statistically been proven time and time again to be one of the worst areas in the entire brass city. It has a higher arrest record and criminal activity recorded compared to the east end. My brother and I both grew up in the east end of Waterbury. I purchased my home over four years ago in the East Mountain area for my child Alexa Prebisch to receive her education in a warm and safe environment. I expected to have the same for her soon-to-be three-year-old sister, Alea. The way I see it, the parents that also purchased homes in this area who expected the same security for their children will all be overpaying about two to three thousand more in taxes than they should be. Again, we bought homes for our children to attend classes on the east end, not in the south end of the city. My oldest daughter, Alexa, has since graduated. She is top of her class at Eastas Thomas Edison Middle School, a STEM magnet school in Merritton, Connecticut. She is consistently achieving the highest test scores on a team of over ninety students on her I-Ready and S-Phax exams. She was one of two students chosen to represent the entire team in front of a Harvard professor. This week, she will be attending an all-day program at Central Connecticut State University called Campy. There are numerous achievements that this child, a Wendell Cross class of 2018 graduate, has accomplished, thank you to the education she received at Wendell Cross. The strength, ability to focus, comprehensive competence she was instilled in from day one. My fear is that the staff will be inclined to retire or find employment elsewhere if they are not assured that the St. Joseph's Building and its surroundings are not safe or adequate for teaching. New teachers will come in and my daughter Alea will not have the same opportunity. A parent and teacher at another school informed me that there were city employees walking through St. Peter and Paul last month. Why is that assessment not public knowledge and why has there no proposal sent to the parish board? The church representative assured me the building has capacity to house the children from Wendell Cross. Capacity should not be a concern yet. The superintendent's office stated that capacity was mentioned, also that the building would take too much time to repair. They have at least a hundred and forty students in class there now. I doubt that a building currently utilized and is in further disrepair, disrepair than a school that hasn't been utilized in several years. My request is that all efforts be put forward to find a building in the east end of Waterbury where your highest city taxpayers will be comfortable sending their children and the Wendell Cross teachers and staff will feel comfortable teaching. These children are not cities, these children are the city's future. They are not collateral damage for someone's pet project or hidden agenda. Thank you.
Ms. Pelletier, if you'd still like to speak, because we've gone through all the Waterbury residents, please come on up. You've been a longtime parishioner at St. Blazes and when I leave here tonight, my mother's going to call and yell at me if I don't let you come up and talk, so. She yells at me for enough things, I don't need her to yell at me for that as well.
I'm Marion Marsalinas, that's the Lithuanian name, Pelletier. And I lived in Waterbury Uptown Plot for years, attended St. Joseph's School and my six brothers and sister attended there as well. And again, I asked Peter to make the comment. I had called the Archbishop's Office when we heard about the negotiations for the school and all we heard about was school, school, school. I was told by one of their representatives that the pastor and the trustees must be involved in this. And speaking with one of the trustees just today, he said he was surprised at what we heard. And also, we were told at a meeting last week by someone else that if this lease is signed, that everything has to be cleaned out by July 1st. And now I'm hearing something different. So, this is where the confusion lies, which is why I had asked Peter to read my statement that, you know, if you could at least put a, a delay in here so we can, you know, contact the archdiocese and find out what's going on. I mean, we're not even sure exactly who negotiated the lease, including the other two buildings. So, I would just like to ask you to please take that into consideration that members of the parish who have been lifelong members weren't even informed of anything that was going on, other than we knew the school was being, being looked at. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Okay, with that, the next order of business would be the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of May 6, 2019. Alderman Brunelli.
Motion approved the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, May 6, 2019. So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, Alderman Lopez. Are there any changes to the minutes, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. Mayor, did you, gonna, did you want to say anything now? Okay.
So, I'm, I'm grateful for the last speaker's comments as well. And I think as far as Linus leaves here, we'll be meeting in the morning and we will go over the details. But, if, if, if you look at the lease, there is language in there that does not allow the city to shut the parish out of the convent or we don't have any interest in the other building whatsoever. We'll work out those details. I can't speak for the miscommunication that goes on within the church itself. I, I just don't know. I, I suspect it's because of all the changes, consolidations, reassignments, I don't know. But I do know that it does concern me. There was, there was the worst neighborhood in the city of Waterbury statistically and that was in the north end and that was on Division Street and that was on Grig Street and had been for years. And St. Lucy's School and Church were there. The school closed, church stayed open. The recreation center attached with St. Lucy's School closed in the early 2000s. There was incredible issues there. And Waterbury Pal went in and bought the school, bought the rec center, bought everything around it. Waterbury Police Department went in, Waterbury teachers went in and cleaned the school, painted the school, did a capital project in the school. Not much different than what is trying to happen here at St. Joseph's. And that neighborhood now has no crime, has recreation centers indoor and outdoor, has so many opportunities for the children in that immediate neighborhood that didn't have opportunities before, similar to the children who live in the Brooklyn neighborhood. It is our intention, it's the city's intention, it is the intention of everyone involved to rehabilitate St. Joseph's School, working with the parish and with the archdiocese to make it a swing space school like it was when we built Duggan's School. There were no issues then. The neighborhood hasn't changed since. The crime stats, I'm sorry to say it because I hate to pit one neighborhood against another, but I have them in front of me and I will read them because I think I need to. Now, this is coming directly from the Waterbury Police Department. You, anyone can feel free, including the newspaper, to check of them. This is for the last year in the vicinity of St. Joseph's School, within a quarter-mile radius and the vicinity of East Mountain population within a quarter-mile radius. Let me first start out by saying that in the quarter-mile radius surrounding Wendell Cross School, 2,234 people occupy 767 houses. In the vicinity, within a quarter-mile of St. Joseph's School, 3,900 people live and occupy 1,393 homes. So, as you can see, there's a huge, the neighborhood surrounding St. Joseph's is a densely populated neighborhood. The neighborhood surrounding East Mountain or Wendell Cross is a different makeup, mostly single-family homes in a quarter-mile radius and a quarter-mile radius of St. Joseph's are mostly multifamily homes. Yes, there's a different demographic of people. Yes, there's a different income level per capita in that quarter-mile. But, at the end of the day, last year, there were no murders or manslaughter's in either neighborhood. There were no negligent manslaughter's in either neighborhood. And the, the quarter-mile, by the way, these are not convictions, these are crimes reported. In the quarter-mile area surrounding St. Joseph's School, last year, the whole calendar year, when I say last year, I mean the last twelve months, not 2018, the last twelve months. So, from May 1st, 2018 to April 30th, 2019, there were two reports of sexual assault in the immediate neighborhood of St. Joseph's and there were four reports of sexual assault in the immediate neighborhood of Wendell Cross. Robberies is different. In the immediate neighborhood of St. Joseph's School, there were two reported robberies in the last twelve months. And in the last twelve months, there were seven reported robberies in the Wendell Cross immediate neighborhood. Burglaries. In the St. Joseph's School, in the last twelve months, there were twelve reported burglaries and there were eleven reported burglaries in the Wendell Cross neighborhood. Motor vehicle thefts. In the immediate neighborhood of St. Joseph's, in the last twelve months, there were twenty motor vehicle thefts. In the immediate neighborhood of Wendell Cross, there were forty in the last year. So statistically, it is what it is. So, I, I recognize and understand that the neighborhood looks different. I do. But the data is the data. And the truth is, the people in Brooklyn deserve the same opportunities that the people in the east end and the west end and the south end and every corner and inch of this city. And the people of Brooklyn are proud of their neighborhood and the people of Brooklyn would like to see their neighborhood revitalized. And Lisa Velez, the former head of the Neighborhood Association, believed heavily in that. And so, I believe that there's a model for this and the model is right up there on Division Street. And I will tell you that this school has been inspected. There is no mold in that school. The, the security in that school will be, we will meet all of your concerns. We will have high visibility of police officers. We will have traffic control. We will make sure the school is as protected during the daylight hours as in the evening hours. All after-school programs will continue. The state of Connecticut has a rule. If they're going to invest, as they are heavily into the new school, the swing space must meet the homeland security standards. There will be cameras, more so than you have in your school now. There will be alarms, more so than you have in your school now. There will, there is benchmarks that the state of Connecticut adopted for swing space and new construction. As a matter of fact, you will have state-of-the-art technology in St. Joseph's School, much more so than you've ever seen before. Look, I get it. We all get it. But, and, and I, I will address the St. Peter and Paul issue in a second, but just give me a second, just give me an ounce of respect for a second here, okay? We, I was the police chief here. I was the police officer here for thirty years. I know the Brooklyn neighborhood. I worked it. I walked the beat there. I worked there in narcotics. I worked there in every capacity you could possibly work there. The Brooklyn neighborhood, believe it or not, is in better shape today than it has been in a long time because the people of Brooklyn are united and are working hard to bring their neighborhood back to the respect that it wants to have. Every area of the city changes from time to time. The reality is, is that those children in Brooklyn deserve the same opportunities as any children anywhere else in this city, period. And bringing the Wendell Cross students there for swing space, I get it. It is different. It looks different, but it's not going to be different. The building is actually very sound. The building is under remediation now. We have met all of the inspections. We will continue to meet all the inspections. And there is amazing things that are going to happen in that neighborhood in, in the upcoming future. So, I understand your concern and I get it, but the fact is, is we will protect your children, period. At the end of the day, Brooklyn neighborhood is one of the most historical, traditional neighborhoods in this city, decimated by the 55 flood, decimated by the construction of the highway, but it's still there and the people are still there because they are committed. Yes, there's 3,900 people living there compared to 2,200 people in a quarter-mile radius of Wendell Cross versus Brooklyn. You're gonna, when that population of difference in population, different things happen, but these are the statistics, ladies and gentlemen. They don't lie. These are the statistics. So, I'm sorry that you feel the way you do. Upon the positive note, we're building a $46 million state-of-the-art school that will offer your children incredible opportunities, as much or more so than any other school in the city because our last school was completed several years ago and technology has improved amazingly in that period of time and so has school construction. This city leveraged every ounce of political capital we have to get this project approved as this is today. There have been negotiations ongoing for such a long time, it is a shock to all of us who were part of that, that that's not taken into consideration. We are trying to do the right thing for every corner of the city and we mean it. And there will be ample opportunities at the Wendell Cross School and the same opportunities will happen at St. Joseph's during the two-year swing space. And remember, it's swing space. And also remember, when you move into your new school, you will be a part of making another part of this city a better place by having your children educated. When it comes to St. Peter and Paul, I wanted St. Peter and Paul three years ago, three and a half years ago. I was approached by Lamont Senior at the time and asked at a funeral mass if I was interested as the mayor, if the city would be interested in exploring the opportunities that laid ahead for St. Peter and Paul in a partnership with the city. That was three and a half years ago. I expressed interest in the school. We spoke about the school. When the priest brought it back to the board at St. Peter and Paul and brought it back to the parish of St. Peter and Paul, there was strong resistance to it, strong, because people didn't want to face the fact that the school enrollment had dwindled to a very difficult level. They didn't want to lose their school. Who would? They didn't want to lose their church. Who would? None of us do. There's eighteen churches in this city and we're seeing the consolidations and we've seen the closing of schools and we've seen the anxiety that it causes and I get it. I'm a pressure-inflected sacrament. I get it. We understand it. I'm the product of Catholic schools as well, but the truth is, we're in a different place. We as a city are trying to accommodate everyone. We're trying to accommodate the parishes. We're trying to work with the archdiocese to recognize that there could be assets and opportunities that could make this city a better place. St. Peter and Paul's is one of them. But the fact remains, the school backed off because of the opposition. But the fact remains, the school backed off because of the opposition three and a half years ago. The city certainly wasn't going to get involved in anything that was going to go against the wishes of the parish or the school council out there, so that plan went astride. Saint Mary's Grammar School closed in the meantime, and they went up to Blessed Sacrament. Saint Peter and Paul's enrollment continues to decline. And so they announced, shockingly, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but shockingly, it was announced on March 11th until the 12th that Saint Peter and Paul's was going to close. I got a phone call the evening of the 12th, and was told as a courtesy that Saint Peter and Paul's school was closing. I thought they meant it was going to close the following year. They meant, no, it's closing in June. On the 13th of March, I called the same people who called me from the archdiocese to tell me the school was closing, and asked them if there was any possibility that that school could be considered as swing space. And they said absolutely not. Now, again, it's the same issue, did they talk to Father LaBornea? Obviously, they didn't. I talked to Father LaBornea last Friday on his birthday, and I apologized to him not recognizing how the steps work, and said, "Father, I would have called you, I certainly got the call from the archdiocese, so I returned the call to the archdiocese inquiring about the swing space." And he said to me, "Neil," and he wrote it in an email, "We would love to have a relationship with the city of Waterbury, but the fact is, there is no single possible way that Saint Peter and Paul's school could have been used for swing space for August of this year." There's just no way. Because they've occupied those buildings for all of those years, there is just no way. I said, "Father, I would really appreciate it if you would write that in an email." And he wrote it. And, you know, the fact is, those are the facts. Would I prefer to use Saint Peter and Paul and have Saint Peter and Paul an asset of the city someday in the future? I think it's a great thing. I think it could be a great thing. But it wasn't in the cards. We have a deadline here for this project, folks, and people have worked literally seven days a week to make sure that these deadlines are met. And so there is no humanly possible way that Saint Peter and Paul's was an option for swing space for this up-and-coming school year. I'm sorry, but that's the truth. And if you don't believe me, ask Father LaBornea. That's all I can say, okay? So work with us, we're trying to make the city as a whole a better place. We are not going to put your children in any harm or danger. We will be there, we will be there every step of the way while they're there. We will be, you know, don't shake your head, we will be there. If I have to assign police, if you feel that the school's not safe enough, well, we will have police officers there. If you feel that there's not enough police officers, then we will talk about it. And if you feel your concerns have merit and are warranted, or you're just busting out in your heart that you're so anxious over this, we will do the right thing, like we always, like we always. We've never walked away from a neighborhood, ever. And we're not going to walk, as a matter of fact, we're investing as heavily into Brooklyn now as we have been for a long, long time, and we're building a park there, acquiring the property as we speak. We're trying to do the right thing for the entire city, okay? And I know it's been a long time, and it's going to get longer for the aldermen because we're not even on our first agenda item. But I wanted to make sure that you're all clear on where we are, okay? Thank you.
All right.
Sorry.
That's okay.
It's right, it's important, it's important. And we have commissioners from the Board of Education here, you know, the commissioners have been in the building, each and every one of them have all maintained and stated that they think the school building is going to be beautiful, or Saint Joe's, and it's going to be safe, and that we have the proper plans in place. So please trust in the people that you vote for. We will not disappoint you. And if that's not a good enough explanation, I don't know what else I can say, but I'm just telling you that's our plan, okay?
Mr. President, should we go to item agenda number one?
No, we've got to add some things to the agenda and then assign them to the committee of the whole, so let us do that housekeeping and then we'll get to the items, okay? So, the next item, what I would entertain is you should have in front of you, an item proposed to be added is item number six, which is a contract administered by the state of Connecticut for HIV prevention in the contract amount of $558,000 for the period of January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2021. There is no funding or matching requirement from the city. This is a time-sensitive agreement, so they've asked us to add it as item number six. You should also have in front of you item number seven divided into seven A and seven B. Seven A being the appointment of Alexis Estrada to the Board of Public Health, and item seven B being the appointment of Betty Johnson to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I would entertain a motion to add items six and seven A and B to the agenda.
Mr. President, motion to add six, item six and seven A to the agenda under Intergovernmental Sumo.
Six, seven A and seven B, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second. Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, second by Alderman Lopez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the items are added. I would then recommend that since, with respect to the Saint Joseph's lease, and with respect to the Regional Development Corporation, there's a great deal of interest, that we refer those to the committee of the whole rather than to committees so that everyone can participate, and there being so few other items, I would then suggest that we refer items three, five, six, seven A and B, and old business number four to the committee of the whole. Is there a motion?
Sumo.
Second. Made by Alderman Brunelli, second by Alderman Lopez, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Those items then refer to the committee of the whole. We're going to take a short recess for about three minutes or so, and then we'll come back, we'll go into the committee of the whole and we'll take these items up. All right, if we could have our folks try to come back and start taking their seats All right, if everyone could come back, we can get all of the aldermen back, we will All right, at this point, I would entertain a motion that we resolve ourselves in the committee of the whole to deal with the items that have been referred to the committee of the whole.
Sumo.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, and we are now in the committee of the whole. So with that, the first item we will take up is old business item number four, which is the proposed ordinance revisions relating to the Nogatuck Valley Regional Development With that, we'll call it Mayor O'Leary.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So this is a very important subject as well tonight, and first I want to acknowledge Mayor Pete Hess is here from Nogatuck, and Attorney Carlos Santos from Nogatuck, and we're also very, very excited to have Mr. Jim Smith here tonight, the chairman, former chairman and CEO of Webster Bank, also a member of, a co-chair actually, of the Connecticut Economic Resource Center. So you're all familiar, I think, or most of you are familiar with the Nogatuck Valley Development Corporation that was responsible for the incredible work they did in downtown Waterbury quite some time ago, which included Waterbury Yukon, the Palace Theater, let's see, I'll walk myself down the street, the Roland Building, the 400 Grand Street, and just an amazing amount of infrastructure work done in downtown Waterbury and under the ground. Mike O'Connor, the former CEO of NVDC is here, and will speak to you a little bit about, more about NVDC. But quite some time ago, in meeting with Governor Malloy, and former Governor Malloy, and Governor Lamont now, meeting with OPM over the last several years under the direction of Ben Barnes, and meeting with OPM now with the new administration under the direction of Melissa McCaw and others, you know, the theme has not changed. The state of Connecticut is looking for growth, they're looking for economic development opportunities, they're looking for cities and towns to work together, not as separate silos, to accomplish those needs. You all have heard this, you've all read this, it's called shared services, back office sharing, they want to see things happen not only in the government level in that regard, but also in the school district level. I'm not going anywhere near the school district stuff tonight. This is all about economic development globally, well, in form a, from a perspective of regionalization, using resources from our cities and towns around us to work together to build our region from an economic development perspective, from grand list growth, from whatever towns are impacted for employment, increased employment opportunities, and to bring more residents into the state of Connecticut. This is the grand plan. So President Penaruski, members of the board, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight regarding the proposed ordinance revisions related to the Nogatuck Valley Regional Development Corporation, hopefully to be known as NVRDC. Since coming into office in December of 2011, we've made economic development, job creation, and sustained grand list growth some of the major core functions of this administration. Together, we have taken great strides and seen tangible progress here in the city of Waterbury. For example, the city-owned Waterbury Industrial Commons located on Thomaston Avenue is the shining example of the city's investment in promoting the resurgence of manufacturing. Levata, Atlantic Steel Wired Mold Offering have created jobs and have grown the grand list. Right next to the Waterbury Industrial Commons is, as you all know, King Industries, which is a $65 million private investment that will yield over 200 jobs when construction is completed. We've engaged in public-private partnerships, transforming the Holland Hughes Building, which lay vacant for over 20 years, into a center of higher education and a source of 400-plus jobs. We have partnered with the state of Connecticut to widen and expand the 84 widening project. We, when I say partnered, I'm not sure that is an accurate description. Quite frankly, we begged the Governor Malloy and the state DOT to please fund the 84 widening project because it had been on the books for a decade and had never been funded. We got it funded, and the results of that are increasing property values, creating grand, creating and growing the grand list, creating jobs, attracting new businesses like Ideal Fish, Texas Roadhouse, CardMax, Restaurant Depot, and Hoffmann BMW. So that's just that part. But the biggest, in my opinion, advantaged 84 widening project amongst all these other things is the increased quality of life for everyone coming through Waterbury. People who live in Waterbury and people who used to avoid Waterbury because you got stuck in traffic anywhere from 20 minutes to an hour, and now people sail through Waterbury. Now, I will tell you that we do, we all know... Now, I will tell you that we do, we all know, the Mixmaster site is next unfortunately, but for the moment, for the larger majority of the day, it's an easy commute through Waterbury, which has made Waterbury a place that people have, are, would like to go to now instead of avoid. And most recently, over the last month, the city has celebrated unprecedented investment in the city's south end with the ongoing demolition of Animate and the groundbreaking of the state's first regional food hub, the site of the former, of a former brownfield. It's no secret that a number of the projects that I just referenced garnered financial support from the state of Connecticut. I'll go a step further. Without the state of Connecticut's support, those projects would not have been able to get off the ground. As you know, the current fiscal climate and the direction of the state leadership has led us to a point in time where the debt diet quote-quote has been implemented, and intense scrutiny will be given to the allocation and disbursement of these critical development dollars moving forward. However, as your mayor and in my roles as president of the CCM and chairman of the Nogatuck Valley COG, I've had the opportunity to work closely with Governor Lamont, OPM Secretary Melissa McCaw, and the State Department of Economic Development. In many conversations with state leadership, a clear message has been sent. Despite the debt diet, there will be funding that is available, but the recipients of this funding will be municipalities that have shown a commitment to a regional approach to economic development with an emphasis on creating jobs, sharing services, and cutting costs. Here in Waterbury, we've already taken a regional approach to address challenges that once plagued the development of 163 acres of city-owned property that lies adjacent to and within the Nogatuck Industrial Park. For over 40 years, attempts were made to convert this parcel that straddles the Waterbury-Nogatuck line into, amongst other things, a rock quarry, a casino, an IMAX theater, and I think there was a dog track supposed to go there at one point. However, a steep rocky hill where the road would be excavated, excavated in Waterbury made past development endeavors prohibitively expensive and no one was interested. With the goal of unlocking the economic and grand list growth potential of this site, alternate approaches were studied, working with Mayor Hess, during which time it became clear that if access to the Waterbury-owned land could be achieved via the Nogatuck Industrial Park instead of South Main Street, the city's landlocked parcel could become viable and attractive, and attractive for development. In response, the NVDC, the Borough of Nogatuck, Mayor Hess, and the City of Waterbury came together in a regional effort to jointly purchase a 10-acre lot located in Nogatuck that could be developed into an access road with utilities. Together, Mayor Hess and I approached the Department of Economic and Community Development and were successful in obtaining a $2.8 million grant to build that roadway. Joint efforts continue as the Borough of Nogatuck and the City of Waterbury applied for and were successful in receiving Opportunity Zone designation for the adjacent census tracts encompassing the parcels proposed for the Waterbury-Nogatuck Industrial Park. We believe, Mayor Hess and I and others, that we were successful in receiving, actually we don't believe, we know, that we were successful in receiving the DECD grant and the Opportunity Zone designation by touting the existing regional partnership that continues to this day. The reality is, the economic vitality of Waterbury is tied in no small part to the economic health and well-being of the Borough of Nogatuck and the Nogatuck Valley region. The NVRDC ordinance revisions that you are about, that are before you this evening represent a natural progression in maximizing our current economic development efforts, but just as importantly, the formation of NVRDC is a part of a much broader vision for economic development that will extend far into the future. There is not quote, "a one-size-fits-all model" for economic development. The NVRDC will allow and enhance the ability of the city of Waterbury and neighboring municipalities, not just Nogatuck, in this case tonight before you, it's Waterbury-Nogatuck, but any municipality can work collaboratively with the NVRDC to develop creative and innovative solutions and strategies. Meanwhile, Waterbury Development Corporation will remain an integral part of Waterbury's community development strategy. We envision that its employees, including its capable and valued leader Jim Nardozzi, will continue to manage local projects and provide resources to NVRDC in regional projects. No layoffs are envisioned. They will have an even greater opportunity to grow and contribute than before. NVRDC positions Waterbury and the region to attract high-level leadership talent required to drive our ambitious development plans forward, to manage larger projects, the region, than we can today, and to better qualify for state financing, very important, for brownfield redevelopment, and all other projects that represent the next phase of Waterbury's resurgence and the region. Working together with the neighboring communities will make every effort to tear down the challenges and barriers standing in the way of economic development and job creation in the region. With that, which I have just shared in mind, I would ask this board to approve the proposed ordinance revisions relating to the Nogatuck Valley Regional Development Corporation. So as I said before, or maybe I didn't say it, but I want to say it in case it wasn't clear, WDC stays the same. Right now, WDC's entire focus is project management. We have about 22 projects in the funnel. No one will lose their positions. If this comes to the vision that Mayor Hess and myself and others in this room tonight who have worked on this for about a year, we believe that this is exactly what the state of Connecticut will support. We believe that strongly because we've had these conversations with the state of Connecticut. And we believe that we will model our agency after the Capital Region Development Authority, so we're not inventing the wheel or reinventing the wheel. We're, all we're doing is taking NVDC and making it a regional authority. We are not adding multiple layers of bureaucracy. NVRDC will be located where the current WDC is located, there's plenty of space there. If we need more space, there's that option as well. We are not adding any jobs at the moment, except for an executive directorship of the NVRDC. Job description has been drawn up. Who's going to pay for that? We will pay for a portion of it, Nogatuck will pay for a portion of it, and the assets of the Nogatuck Valley Development Corporation will pay for a portion. All other back office services will be shared by existing staff, finance people, secretarial staff, administrative staff. We're not adding anything. Now, if we get to the point where we would like to be, where we're, we see an influx of development opportunities, we see things on freight streets develop the way that we would like to see, we see things down in the Borough of Nogatuck with Mayor Hess's rail port come to fruition, and other amazing projects that are on the verge in Nogatuck, like we have so many on the verge in Waterbury, if it requires that we need additional staff, well, the, the, excuse me, the, the growth, the growth will dictate that opportunity. We are not going to hire people for the sake of hiring people because that is not what this is intended to do. What this is intended to do is to leverage our opportunities with the state of Connecticut, Department of Economic Development, Office of Policy Management, deep in the governor's office, to leverage our resources, just like the Connect, the Capital Regional Development has done in Hartford. Hartford and East Hartford make up that authority, and that authority is responsible for Rensselaer Field, Dunkin' Donuts, and a multitude of other projects that have happened within the city of Hartford over the last several years, primarily housing opportunities and of course the location of the University of Connecticut Hartford downtown. It's all been part of the Capital Regional Development Authority. This is what we're looking to do here. We're not looking to create another level of bureaucracy, we're not looking to do anything but give Waterbury, Nogatuck, and the other towns in the region an opportunity. We have another asset here, another huge asset here, that is going to be expanded upon due to the work of Mayor Hess, myself, and our state delegation, and that's the upgrade of the rail line. The upgrade of the rail line is real, the upgrade of the rail line is budgeted, the upgrade of the rail line is underway, the re-signalizations and the sightings, which will enable us to bring more people in and out of Waterbury via the rail line. It's huge, you guys, it's huge, and it's happening. This is the time for this. This is the time for us to act. This is the time for us to get the message out to the state of Connecticut that we are willing to embrace their vision. This is the example that we will set with the region being able to leverage the funding that is necessary. As you know, we've been very successful as a city leveraging funding from the state for all the projects that you don't want me to repeat again and more. But the reality is, if we work together with the other towns specific to this, Nogatuck, but Middlebury, and don't forget one other beautiful place out there, folks, Oxford, and what's in Oxford, airport, and what's around Oxford, airport, an enterprise zone, there's a lot that can happen that can have ripple effects, positive impacts on the people of Waterbury and the taxpayers of the city of Waterbury and the region. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Michael O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor O'Leary, Mayor O'Leary, Mayor Hess, President Penaruski, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening and have the opportunity to address the issue of the ordinance in front of you for the Nogatuck Valley Regional Development Corporation. My name is Michael O'Connor, I'm the Waterbury Regional President at Webster Bank and volunteer for the NVDC. You know, I'd just like to start by commending the board and Mayor O'Leary for all their collective efforts, successful efforts in economic development over the last eight years. You know, the numbers are really surprising. For someone who's in the city of Waterbury most every day, mostly in downtown, to hear the numbers of new job growth and, and new businesses are fairly astounding. Over that period, 65 net new businesses to the city of Waterbury, over 2,500 new jobs, over $310 million growth in your grand list to the efforts in economic development by the mayor and you. So my hat's off to you, it's, it's really a wonderful thing to see. And I've worked in the city for almost, well, for over 20 years now, and I remember sitting in meetings on the workforce board in, in front of this panel and hearing about successive months and quarters of being the highest city of unemployment rate within the state of Connecticut, and, and really kind of dire times, 14 and 15% unemployment rates. The last statistic that I've seen, unemployment rate was down to 5.3% in 2017, truly astounding. So my hat's again off to you and the efforts that, that you've had. Over the course of the last year or so, I've had the opportunity to meet with Mayor Hess and with Mayor O'Leary, the Webster Bank Chairman, Jim Smith, and other business leaders to talk about, you know, how we move the city forward and the region forward in a, in an approach that we see is a national trend and certainly a trend that is going to go into the city. I've met with the Board of Directors of the NVDC, and we've concluded the mayor's approach for regional development agency is a strong step forward for the city and for the region. So we fully endorse and embrace his proposal. As you know, and I think Mayor O'Leary talked about a few of the projects that we have undertaken, the NVDC has a proud history here in the city of Waterbury for delivering on projects, for funding opportunities within the city. Most recently, in the past few years, the purchase of the Nogatuck property with, with the city of Waterbury and the city of Nogatuck, investing in the city for economic development studies and the like, all the time while the WDC has been the economic development authority. We've actually also funded part of the WDC and when they moved in support of their efforts and fully endorse the fact that the WDC will stay on as a vibrant organization to assist the city of Waterbury. The NVDC, upon a positive action here by this board and by the Board of Burgess in Nogatuck, has already voted to change their name to the NVRDC, and we will position ourselves for an election of a new Board of Directors upon that vote. The trends in economic development are increasingly regional, and I think that what you'll find is certainly if, if you're not jumping on the bus today, you know, we could be left behind, and we certainly don't want to see that. The benefits in growth and development in a regional approach are business attraction, as you've seen, but really in what, what I like to call career creation. You know, we talk about jobs, and that's really important, but the fact is, when you create careers, careers, you have something for someone who lives in a community to have for their lifetime, and, and that's something that we believe truly in. A regional approach also helps, helps the tax base, not only the city of Waterbury, but the region. And quite frankly, it's very short-sighted of, of all of us if we just think about our own town, right? It's important that the town of Nogatuck, the Borough of Nogatuck, the city of Waterbury, and the surrounding towns all have vibrancy and add to the regional approach. I think Mayor O'Leary also talked about the debt diet. I think it's clear that we understand the state is under their own economic pressures, and if you are not looking at how the state is proposing funding going forward, we'd be short-sighted and not following through with that. The, the issue of governance, I just wanted to address for a second. The NVDC, and now what will be the NRVDC, NVRDC, excuse me, has consistently been managed under best practices. While we managed the downtown development project, which consisted of the Palace Theater, the Arts Mag School, Yukon, and two parking garages, almost near $200 million investment in the city of Waterbury, that was done without one lawsuit. We had audits from the state of Connecticut and from others to see how we spent our, our funds, the state funds that came into the city, without one issue. We filed the city, or the, the state procurement guidelines as were indicated within the proposal and, and have always done so. We expect that will also continue on with the new organization. All the projects that you would ask of the new organization would be something that would come before you. So it wouldn't be inventive of the board or the, the organization to come up with projects and just execute on those. They would have the blessings of the mayor, the blessings of the surrounding towns if they're involved, and you as the legislative body that represents the city of Waterbury. One of the first orders of business for the new board will be to hire a CEO of the organization. We expect that to be a national in scope search for someone who is bright and talented in deal-making, development, and marketing. That person is the only employee that would be slated at this time for the new organization. But let me be clear, there's, there's no thought at this point of who that would be. We do expect that it'll be a, a search that will go out. We've drafted a proposed job description, and we'll share that with the appropriate parties of the cities as we move forward. So I'd entertain questions with the mayor and with the team that you may have, but the NVRDC very much looks forward to working with you and the city of Waterbury to make the region and the city a great place to work, live, and play. Thank you.
Did Mayor Hess want to speak? Mayor Hess, did you want to speak at all?
Mayor.
And, and you may not have been prepared, I don't want to put you on the spot, but...
Pete Hess, mayor of Nogatuck, just very briefly, we fully endorse this regional concept. You know, Waterbury is a big city, but Nogatuck is a small city, but we don't have the juice of Waterbury, and I just can't call up the governor and, you know, ask for things like that. It's hard in a small city. Most smaller cities and towns have great difficulty... Most smaller cities and towns have great difficulty in getting funding. We're very happy to have Jim Smith now as our liaison and working up in Hartford, but it's difficult for a small town. So we get the message. We get it loud and clear. In order to get funding and to move forward, our projects have to be regional in nature, and we have to work together. Now fortunately, in Nogatuck, our best and our biggest projects are regional in nature, and I believe they are some of the best projects in the entire state of Connecticut. I'm not going to go into them in detail, but I can tell you that our freight rail project in Nogatuck, which we call the inland port of Nogatuck, has the capacity, according to the people working for us on the cost benefit analysis, to be one of the biggest and best projects ever to hit Connecticut. We've got companies from Maine, from New England, who are going to be coming on freight rail to the Nogatuck area. And when I say Nogatuck area, that includes Waterbury and the surrounding towns. There is going to be quite a bit of business coming from the north, from New England and Canada, to the Waterbury area. Going the other way, when the trains go back, Nogatuck is going to have international customs. So for example, if you're in Europe and you want to get your goods to New England or eastern Canada, you're going to be able to save money by coming to the port of Nogatuck by truck from Newark or New York, and then going north on one train line all the way to New England or Canada. Now, when I say one train line, that's important because the way logistics work in the world today, if you have to change trains, every container costs $450 to change every container. And when you have to negotiate rates with different lines, it becomes very difficult. So there is existing infrastructure that is in place that can accommodate a major freight rail project in central Connecticut. So that's probably our biggest project, but second to none is the Waterbury Branch Line. You know, Nogatuck has probably the best transit-oriented development site in New England. You know, all our old factories along the river and the train line are gone. We have large swaths of open land ready to be made into a mixed-use transit-oriented development project. So working with Waterbury makes great sense, and it's also easy to work with Waterbury. You know, I got to tell you, the deal in the Waterbury-Nogatuck property, I don't think it took us more than five minutes to negotiate it. We get along great. It's a logical deal. It makes sense for both. We work together well. We go up to Hartford, and when we're there together, they really listened, and they gave us everything we asked for right away. So the regional approach works. We're all for it. We look forward to working with Waterbury and other towns, working together and making it better for the entire region, which will benefit Nogatuck, Waterbury, and the other towns. So we're all in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. If I just could maybe, Mike, or Mayor, just if you can explain a little bit what you think of, is like how WDC and NVDC would work together on these projects? I'm sorry, hold on, Debbie's got to change the tape.
The NVRDC certainly would consult and work cross purposes, or not, excuse me, not cross purposes, work collectively with the NEDC in Nogatuck and the WDC here in Waterbury. I don't see overlap in projects. There's clearly enough work for the WDC to manage the infrastructure here in the city of Waterbury. This, again, would be the regional type of projects. And not only do you see from the state...
I don't know what that is.
I expected it to continue on.
If it were bagpipes, I know it was Tommy making his arrival, but without, I don't know what the orchestra is.
So, you know, quite frankly, you know, for nonprofits, you have to look at shared services. There's so many nonprofits here, small in scope, within the region and the city, and they have directors and finance people and administrative staff. So our approach is that, you know, we'd start with CEO, we'd have the shared services. So there's no impact to jobs within the WDC. And in many ways, it may enhance their opportunity for work and working on more than just what they have today. So I think you'll see shared services, regional in scope for the new organization, and city approach for the NEDC and the WDC.
And do you see this expanding at some point beyond just Waterbury and Nogatuck and getting into the other towns? And would that require us to bring them in officially, or could we do this with them in an informal way, like Prospect, let's say, or Oxford, as the mayor was talking about? I've heard there's an airport in Oxford, by the way. Pretty nice one down, pretty nice one down there, too, I've heard, so.
I certainly heard and saw the planes fly out over the weekend. I hope you guys had that opportunity as well. It was really quite cool to see. Yeah, certainly success begets success, right? With Nogatuck, we have a natural partner to start, and we'd hope that others would join in. Certainly our immediate suburbs, but maybe as far up as Tomston as well. There's some very natural synergies that you saw in manufacturing heyday that I believe would be similar to what you might have today. But to start, we're looking at the two municipalities and to grow from there.
And then just, it's not anything anyone touched on tonight, but I know there's been some assertions that are out there. And just to clear that all up on the record and be sure that we all understand this, the idea of how this will work from a procurement basis, when you're dealing with state-funded projects, federally funded projects, or locally, you know, development projects, and how do you see all that procurement working? In other words, my question, I guess, most directly is, is this an end run around trying to beat the procurement that we have established here in Waterbury?
No, absolutely not. What I would tell you is, again, in the downtown development project, we followed procurement. We followed the state guidelines for procurement because it was a state-funded project. If it was a city-funded project, we would have followed the city procurement ordinances. So the organization will be bound to follow a procurement process that's regulated by the funder, and if that's the city, which is not presumed early, they would follow the ordinances of the city of Waterbury. If, in fact, it's a DECD-funded or other organization within the state, DEPP, we'll follow the state guidelines that they have. And quite frankly, as you know, it'll come before you to sign off on, but it mandates that you as the city and us as the agent follow their procurement guidelines. And I'd just, again, historically point out that the NVDC has always followed the best practices in procurement.
Yeah, that's why you were founded, right? So to make sure we were doing that at the time. So with that, are there any other questions? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my understanding, from what you stated a little while ago, that NVDC is essentially going to be absorbed by the NVRDC. Is that correct?
So the Nogatuck Valley Development Corporation will vote, and has voted, to change their name upon a successful affirmative vote by you and the city of Nogatuck. So it's a charter name change. So basically, the charter of the NVDC will be given to this process, and you will use that 501(c)(4) designation, so you don't have to go out and solicit the IRS to get a designation of a nonprofit status. And we're bringing our balance sheet to the table. So the assets of the organization will follow on with the new name and the new Board of Directors.
So we're essentially looking to add a new executive director, and we're seeking that position now or after we approve this?
Correct, after. I have drafted, personally drafted, a job description and advertisement for that, but it would make sense to put that out for market until we knew that you were interested.
Understood. So if we have a regional project that we're working on, whether it be the railroad, what have you, what would the, how would the expense share be distributed between the smaller city of Nogatuck and the larger city of Waterbury? Is that something that the charter will...
So the charter is the bylaws. I think operationally and on a policy basis, the organization will have to decide a lot of things moving forward. To start, I think we're looking for seed money from both the borough and the city, and the NVDC's corporate assets will also contribute into that position and pay for it. And as the projects develop, you can get administrative fees from the project, so that will help offset the cost of the position. And then as you move forward, you'd look at how you fund that. All of that, however the budget is and how the expenditures are being made, are public. It's a public entity. We file 990s every year. We'd share with this board and the board of, and Board of Burgess in Nogatuck, you know, the financial statements of the organization. Meetings are held in public, so you'd have that opportunity to see where, in fact, the money's coming from. And if we're asking the city for money, you're certainly here, going to have to vote.
And that's what I wanted to make sure that you were clear on, too, Alderman Sherman. Each project will have an intermunicipal agreement for those that are involved, but certainly every time we need to spend money here, we have to go to you. I'm sure it's not that much different than any other municipality or small town. So the Board of Alderman will still have complete control over that side of the equation like you do now.
Thank you, Mayor. One more question. The shared expense for this executive director will also be, this new organization be utilizing WDC employees? Will it be a shared expense with current WDC employees as well?
That's a good question. I'm sure that if there is a project, you know, well, make sure we understand, so Nogatuck's still going to keep their development, what do you call your authority down there? NEDC, Nogatuck Economic Development Corp., we're going to still keep our corp. And if we get into a regional project, which of course we're really planning on and hoping for, you know, we'll look and see what the balance is, but if it's a regional project, sir, you know, everyone will work together. And don't forget, we will be able to, you know, we'll be able to absorb the assets of the current NVDC as well.
So some of those current assets will go towards salaries, what have you, throughout?
Good. I want to make sure we get this message straight because it's Waterbury, and there's always misinformation circulated. And I'm really glad, Mr. President, that you asked the question about procurement because that's what our, that's what our naysayers put out right away. And unfortunately, there's really no, there's no possible way to battle that kind of thing except to answer questions directly, and I appreciate those. And, you know, the same thing goes, Alderman Sherman. You know, we don't plan on hiring anyone except for an executive director. And the executive director's role is going to be to go out into the state, working with us and the towns that are a part of any initiatives that we're working on, and use that executive director's knowledge, skills, and abilities to leverage the state of Connecticut or the federal government for projects, for funding. And so, you know, in other words, if we're looking for a Tiger grant, we'll be leveraging, like we did successfully in 2013, the Federal Department of Transportation. If we're looking for a rail line improvement project, we'll be looking, of course, to go both federal and state Department of Transportation. Or, you know, so it'll stay within the realm of, depending on where the project's located. And at the end of the day, remember, the project has to make sense for the state of Connecticut to fund it. And by making sense, there has to be a vision. It has to grow grand lists. It has to create jobs, and it has to provide services inside the communities in the region that is hosting the project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I may be ahead of the game here, but I'm just curious as to how would the process, let's say that another town wants to become part of this, what would the process entail? Is it, is there an application process? Do we welcome them before there is a regional economic opportunity? How would that, how would that work?
So I chair the COG, which is now 19 towns, you know, the Council of Governments, you're all familiar, I believe, right? Used to be 11 towns, and then the state, again, in their efforts for more regionalization, reorganized COGS four years ago. And as a part of that reorganization, our COG, used to be 11 towns, now took on eight more towns, so now it's 19 towns are represented in our COG. We meet monthly, and we talk about projects. So in other words, we have announced this kind of under the radar, quite frankly, to our COG members. Who makes up the COG? The leaders of each city or town, first selectmen and mayors. And said, look, you know, this is, this is our time for all of us. We've talked about Mayor Hess's project and ours down at the Nogatuck Industrial Park, but, you know, we challenged, Pete and I challenged the rest of our COG members to look and see what projects they would like to have initiated, and to approach us, because we don't know what's going on in all those other towns, approach us, and let's talk about opportunities and using the NVRDC to leverage the state of Connecticut or the federal government to see if that's a project that's viable and will enhance the region to the way that the hopes are. So there's a lot of approvals that are needed here along the way, Alderman Lopez, but the reality is, as Mayor Hess put it best, you're better to go in there together and look for something that is going to benefit the region than to go in alone, than look for something that's only going to benefit your individual city or town.
Thank you. Also, a follow-up question regarding procurement processes. I just want to make sure that, I mean, I heard correctly, and, but that is also inclusive of Title III and our Good Jobs Ordinance, which is the local ordinances. I just want to make sure that that's all properly included when there is a procurement process.
So any project, whether it's a federal project, which is Section III, right, or state project, statutorily, the state of Connecticut insists that the Good Jobs ordinances in the municipality where the work or money is to be funneled into are followed. It's all, it's all law, and it has to be adhered to. And by the way, we've been audited several times. You know, the Tiger Grant is our amazing project on Freight Street. Federal government audits annually, state audits us annually on all the projects we've done over the last seven and a half years here. And we've been very fortunate because we follow all the rules, and we haven't had any issues of out of compliance at all.
Sure. Alderman Lopez, if I may add to the mayor's comments, the downtown project, I believe, may have been the first project with the Good Jobs Ordinance. So we're at the infancy stage of that. I think we've learned a lot. I personally worked with the labor unions to set up opportunities for local residents to join into the unions and work on the project. So I don't recall what the statistics were, but I know we made good effort to try to get local residents to work on something that we're all so proud of. And while we wanted to work on it, we wanted to make sure that residents had that opportunity as well. We worked with the Workforce Board and the unions directly to try to bring that to bear on the first major development under that ordinance.
Thank you. And my last question would be pertaining to the new Board of Directors, which you mentioned while you were discussing the issue. So is there a board that exists now, and it will be migrating into a new board, or are you bringing new board members completely?
Correct. There is a Board of Directors of the Nogatuck Valley Development Corporation. Upon, again, upon successful affirmative votes from this and Nogatuck, that board will meet and elect a new board. None of the current board members will plan on staying on, though they will be available for consultation if needed. And I have offered to assist with both Mayor Hess and Mayor O'Leary to either serve on the board or serve as a volunteer capacity as it moves forward for an appropriate period of time, or as so needed. But it would be a fresh board as it's a fresh approach. I do expect that both Mayor O'Leary and Mayor Hess will serve on that board.
Will those board members be appointed by the mayors, or will they be selected by...
They'll be selected by the organization, by the NVRDC. So that, the current board will vote on a new board. We are looking to have both mayors serve on it, but we're looking for the business community from the region to serve on the Board of Directors. We are looking for a diverse candidate pool, so we'd offer to you... So we'd offer to you, to this board, suggested names, who you believe would be quality business leaders within the region. We are looking at the capital cities model and how they had, you know, the, the significant business community involvement and input. We believe that brings leverage, it brings best practice, and it brings some political clout as well.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, then, I would entertain a motion with respect to the proposed ordinance revisions relating to the Nogatuck Valley Regional Development Corporation. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve old business item number four.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, second by Alderman Lopez to approve old business item number four. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hoes, no. The motion carries.
Mr. President, if I may, he's probably gonna get mad at me, but, you know, we started conversations about a year and a half or more ago about trying to figure out a way to move Waterbury forward and the region forward. And the conversations have taken place over the last year and a half. And, and, you know, I just want to thank two people that are here with us tonight. One is Mr. Tim Smith, who is no stranger to any of you. He has taken time out of his schedule, sometimes weekly, to look at best practices, best models, not only in Connecticut but in New England, and used his resources to effect that research. And I'm just extraordinarily grateful for his leadership on this. And I also want to thank Gary O'Connor from Pullman and Comley, who does a lot of our legal work, and they did research and best practices as well on what works and what doesn't. And the two of them are here tonight, and I just really wanted all of you to know the amount of time, effort, and this is not just weekday work. There's been a lot of weeknight work, but most importantly, I'll be quite honest with you, a lot of weekend work because that's when these gentlemen's schedules permitted. And I really appreciate it to both of them, and I know that you are as well. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to new business item number five, which is the lease of St. Joseph's School. No, we're just gonna, so, did you want to speak to this first?
You've, you've heard what I had to say. Listen, look, I've said it all. I don't need to repeat myself. I know I'm looking at you and you're all begging me to not talk too much. I don't blame you, but this is a tough subject. And you've heard from the folks here tonight. But on a personal note, speaking on behalf of the Board of Education, a lot of hard work went into this project. A lot of political capital went into the success and the approval of this project. The argument and the concerns are noted. The one shocker tonight, I have to tell you, was hearing from the Lithuanian community. And I have very strong relations with them, relationships with them, and I'm sure many of you do as well. You know, we are meeting with Linus in the morning. We will satisfy his concerns. We've already satisfied his concerns, quite frankly. But we will include his concerns and, and the, you know, the Corporation Council will, working with the Archdiocese Council, you know, will make sure. But there already is language in the lease that gives them access and the time that they need. We're not going to lock anybody out of anywhere. We are just using this space to accommodate our children during the next two years. We have no intention of hurting the Lithuanian organization, the population, or the parish. I don't know what to tell you about the, how things work in the Catholic Church, you know, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm just sad that they haven't been, we assumed, never assumed, but we, we did think that they were familiar. We have been working. We've got an access agreement to the site. We need the lease, folks. We need the lease. And, but we've had the access agreement to the site for some time to do building analysis. The building had been empty for, I think, eight years. And we wanted to make sure that, you know, we were protecting the city and its, and its interests. And so we've been in and out of there. Any given day, there's eight or 10 vehicles out in front there. No one, to my knowledge, has come over to ask us about any of that stuff. But I'm not there every day, and maybe they did, and maybe they just didn't meet the right person. But I think they're more than satisfied tonight with the explanations that they've heard. It's a tough time. People don't, they recognize that there's things happening in their individual parishes. There's things happening all over the city in this regard. And, but we will do everything humanly possible to accommodate the parish and the Lithuanian community. And we really don't have any interest in that house that he referred to. We're not even gonna go in there, or there's no reason for us to go in there. Why it's part of the lease was something the Archdiocese put in the lease. We are not responsible. If the house, water pipe breaks in the house tonight, we are not responsible for anything in that house. We're, that's not, if, if something happens in the school, there's a legal agreement, we occupy the school. We're gonna occupy the convent. But they're gonna have a key to the convent, and they're gonna have full use of the convent to the altar area that the, the gentleman spoke of. So I want to put your minds at ease. You know, this is a school that is suitable for the swing space, and the state of Connecticut has been inside that school. And so the Health Department has been inside that school. Please, you know, you know, I liken this exactly to the analogy I used earlier. This is an opportunity for the city of Waterbury to improve the Brooklyn neighborhood. And those people that occupy the Brooklyn neighborhood and the children, most importantly, who occupy the Brooklyn neighborhood, deserve to have an improved quality of life, which this will bring to them. It will also provide opportunity with the Town Plot Neighborhood Association as if the vision that we hope for comes to fruition, and there's, it is what it is. Right now, it's swing space. But later on, if, if we can incorporate this building and its grounds to improve Brooklyn and afford the Town Plot Neighborhood Association access to this building and the Town Plot Sports Association access to this building, well, that's gonna be to the betterment of the Brooklyn neighborhood that's isolated. And it will be welcoming to have the Town Plot Neighborhood Association, sports associations involved, just like you see at the South End Rec Center, just like you see at the PAL Center, just like you see at the North End Rec Center. This is no different, folks. This hopefully will bring people together. You know, I get, and, give me another minute.
You can have as much time as you want, Mr. Mayor.
I'm getting a look, but I get, you know, when we started PAL, when we started PAL, I saw a lot of what I just saw here tonight and other, about people that were concerned. And they should be. They're children. Why wouldn't they be concerned? They have to be concerned. But the reality is, we're looking to rebuild the city as a whole. PAL is the example used, not only in Connecticut, across the country, of bringing children together. One of the biggest arguments ever in a police chief's conference room was when we were all sitting around a table and developing PAL. And certain neighborhoods of this city said, "We're not bringing our kids up there." Really? Why? Because. Okay. That's okay. Do what you want to do. So we built PAL. And guess what? It got so big and strong that every single section of this city is in PAL. What that means, folks, is that everyone, everyone is part of PAL. People from the North End, the South End, East End, West End, every end. And those who said, "We're not bringing our kids there," guess where they are? Part of PAL. Now, they all have maintained their own neighborhood associations and their sports associations, which is what we wanted. We didn't want to run their sports associations or the neighborhood associations. What we wanted is what happened. We wanted kids from all over the city to get to know each other, to compete against one another, to learn together, to fish together, to learn how to swim together, and then go back to their little neighborhood association or sports association and do their thing. And that's what's exactly what's happened here. And there's no reason, there's no reason why the Brooklyn neighborhood shouldn't be a part of all of it. And right now, the Brooklyn neighborhood is the only section of the city that has struggled because outside of poor Lisa Bales, God rest her soul, you know, she was the strongest advocate God could ever have planted in the Brooklyn neighborhood. And we plan on following her lead on that, despite the fact she's not here. That would have, that was her vision, her dream, her thoughts, and she came to us years ago and spoke of, "Why can't we be part of all this?" So that's the question, the answers. We need the lease, please. I'm asking you to approve the lease so that we can continue to get the building done. We've gotta get this building done. Our plan is to have it done the end of June. We're on schedule, we're on time, but we really need the lease. Thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion. Let me ask you this. Do we need, in light of the conversations you may have tomorrow, to allow there to be some changes to the lease to address those concerns, or can it go through the way it is? I guess my, my question's more to the Corporation Council.
Right. We have the language already in there.
The language will allow us to, to make those adjustments if they're necessary?
Mr. President, I did email you earlier today, I apologize.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
That I, we had already redlined it.
Okay.
And I have a few copies here with me.
Okay.
They're not substantial. I think that they don't need any type of new submission. I'm gonna give you a redline through the clerk, and I, I have three copies left.
Okay. Can, can you do me a favor? If they're not significant, can you just kind of highlight what, what they are?
So essentially, what we have, Council, is there's a specific schedule of events that will be occurring that the township has identified, and that is what the mayor was speaking of a bit earlier. So there's a scheduled events of coffee hours, the Knights of Lithuania, Brooklyn neighborhood. They're actually spelled out when they meet and what they would be reserved for. And there's some non-exclusive where they'll be sharing on nights and weekends, and we did outline that. In addition, there's some additional parking that we did provide for, one for the principal and another spot. We made the, the parking a little bit more expansive. And more importantly, we did amend, this proposal has it after the end of the year, the first year, with this 60-day notice, there's no penalty for the city to exit the lease, again, the second year as well. So we did put those provisions in there in case the city had a different vision or there was any other options available that we could exit the lease without penalty.
Okay. Then with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement for the St. Joseph's School as modified by what was presented to us this evening on the redlined copies. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve, item number five.
Second. Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, second by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nujame?
Thank you, President. Just a couple of questions. I just want to, some have been answered, some I would just like to have reiterated. Obviously, we're on a tight deadline that we have to have shovel in the ground for this process to continue. And if not, then obviously we lose any future hopes or state money for this type of project, correct?
I, I don't like that assessment, I'll be honest with you.
Well, that's what...
You're making it sound like we don't sign the lease, then the project's off, and that's not true.
Okay.
I mean, we need the lease, but it's not like I don't want any one of you to feel like you're being pressured to sign this lease. I want you to approve the lease because it's right, what's right for the district, it's what's right for the city, it's what's right for the children, it's what's right for the Brooklyn neighborhood, it's what's right for the swing space, it's what's right for the project that's gonna be viewed by the state of Connecticut. But no, I don't like that. You know, I had to approve it or the project that Wendell Cross was going down. That's not, that's not correct.
Okay. My other question is, with this lease agreement, we can end this early if need be, if there's other opportunities, correct?
We have, and, and I'm not sure I, I, I think I'm, I'm hearing a tone from you, Alderman Nujame, that, you know, if we don't like it there, we can leave. Honestly, we're committed to St. Joseph's space. If in fact the city decides for a reason that makes sense and the school district decides for a reason that makes sense to leave, we, there, there's plenty of legal opportunity within that lease with 60 days' notice for us to leave there. What I'm cautious about, and if I'm overreaching, I apologize, but I wouldn't want to see us say, you know, well, we're only gonna go in there for a little while and maybe St. Peter and Paul will be available, and we're gonna jump over there. I want to just tell you that could be, first of all, it could be difficult, and we're going to invest heavily in this school. And I, I'm, I'm just being cautious here and telling you that if I feel, through any Alderman or Board of Education member, that we're unable to provide what we've said we will provide, and you, the Board of Education, and myself, think that we can find a space that is more suitable, if that's what you're asking, then those options are on the table. But I don't want to send the wrong message up to East Mountain that that's what we intend to do because only if it makes sense. We have a heavy investment going into St. Joseph's, and I will tell you, because I've been, and you've been in St. Peter and Paul an awful lot, you know, St. Peter and Paul is a beautiful building with a lot of potential. There's no question about it. It's perfectly located and walking school distance. It could be a beautiful educational facility, but it needs work, like every other Catholic asset. Starting with St. Anne's, to St. Margaret's, to St. Lucys, to Blessed Sacrament, all of these schools have had, either need huge capital investment or have had huge capital investment. So I just, I want to be careful. You know, we've already managed to make enough people anxious. I don't want to bring more anxiety or expectations that will lead us to the wrong place.
And, you know, that's kind of, I'm glad you worded it that way, because that's kind of what, you know, obviously people are thinking, and I want to put that to rest, where obviously, you know, I'm one of the Aldermen for that district and wanted to hear the questions, the concerns, and, you know, ask the appropriate questions from our constituents and for myself. And I think you and I both know, you know, sometimes dealing with the Archdiocese could be a little difficult. I've had to go through that a month and a half, two months ago, when my own kids are being displaced from St. Peter and Paul. And, you know, a lot of questions were, well, why can't we just go into St. Peter and Paul? It's not that simple.
It's not.
You can't just go in on, you know, do we have, you know, they got teachers, they end on June 14th, they need time off, they gotta come back with their stuff, it's Archdiocese property. You can't just go in on June 30th when the liability of insurance and everything ends and then go in July 1st and expect that, hey, by mid-August, we're ready to rock and roll.
Right. And clearly, I think you and I are on the same page, and everyone in this room is on the same page. If we can't deliver the expectations that we described here tonight for the parents of those Wendell Cross children, then every option's on the table. But I believe we can, because I believe, first of all, St. Joseph's is, is going to be very accommodating space. And I believe that it's going to, we will be able to live up to the fears and concerns and provide the expectations that we outlined tonight for safety, traffic, parking, lighting, technology, security. We'll do all that. So if we fail in that mission, number one always is what's right for the children, right?
Absolutely.
So we will address that if we have to, but I don't want to send it out there anyway but transparent, because we seem to have a problem with transparency dealing with some of these organizations outside the city. So I want to make sure we're... So, I want to make sure we're clear tonight at this podium.
I mean, again, as a parish member of Saint Peter and Paul, as a father of a child that goes there, as a father that I was transferring my other child from a public school to Saint Peter and Paul next year, the week before, March 11th, when we had gotten the discussion where we didn't have an opportunity to do enrollments anywhere else or with the school lotteries. School looks great from the outside. There's a lot of work to be done.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Inside of it.
Look, I don't know what the future lies for Saint Peter and Paul, but I can tell you as mayor and you as Alderman and Board of Education Commissioners, you know, that property is very, very important to the city of Waterbury in so many different ways. And I think it'll be incumbent upon us to keep a close eye on what is going to happen with that property.
How many buildings are at the St. Joe's property?
So, there's the three that are in the lease. There's a two-family house that you've heard all about. I think when the Lithuanian Club burned down, whatever they were able to salvage, they put in that two-family house. And we have no need for that house. There's zero need for the city of Waterbury for that house, but it's a part of the parcel. And so, the Archdiocese Legal Council put it in there, but we made it clear, we don't even want a key to the place. We have nothing to do with it. We don't, if anything happens to that property, we don't want any liability, any financial exposure whatsoever. So, that leaves two, sir. That leaves the convent, which is a really beautiful, smaller building, much smaller than the school. So, the convent used to have, I think, like, at one time, walk back in nature, like, 20 nuns lived in the convent. And it's cool, because you walk down the hall, and there's these, like, 10 by 10 rooms that used to be their bedrooms, and each room is connected by a bathroom. So, there's a whole bunch of bathrooms in there. And what's better for a kindergarten environment than a bunch of bathrooms?
I know that firsthand.
Sinks and bathrooms. And so, it's beautiful space for that. And then, there is a section, and I know what he's talking about, and there's an altar, you know, it's really small, but it's, listen, it's an altar, and it's where they pray. And it's, look, that's all that matters. But we are not going to interfere, use, encroach, infringe anything to do with that area. That's an area that's exclusive, and will stay that way for them, and they'll have access to that. We can secure our side of the building without infringing on any of that area that was spoken of tonight.
And you touched on a point that through federal funding or what have you, any swing space has to go through Homeland Security standards. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that to put the public at ease?
Yeah.
I mean, something that I didn't even know until you just mentioned it.
Yeah, well, I didn't either. I learned myself, to be honest with you. I kind of knew a little bit, though. Here's what I knew. State Board of Education dictates what's suitable education space. So, if you and I, so, let me just, I'll give you my best experience, because I lived it firsthand. The PAL school, used to be Saint Lucy's, remember? Was closed for a long time. When we reopened the PAL school, we had to get approval from the State Board of Education to have that be education space, because guess who pays for the students' education in Waterbury? For the most part, it comes through the form of a grant called the ECS Grant or Education Cost Sharing. So, they have to sign off on the space. So, they come in, and there's now, because of, unfortunately, because of all the things that have happened throughout the country concerning school safety issues, which we're all very intimately familiar with, the state comes in, and they make sure that you meet all the guidelines for security. So, the doors have to have a buzzer on them. You have to have cameras, you have to have video, you have to have audio in certain areas, you have to have the necessary lighting, you have to have, the fire marshal has to sign off, both city and state. There's a whole checklist of things that have to happen. You know, I'm sure that the parents were not familiar with that, quite frankly.
That's why I wanted to ask it again.
But, you know, that has to happen, because, you know, the funding for those children to be educated comes from the state of Connecticut, and with any kind of funding are rules and regulations that are run by the State Department of Education and the Department of Administrative Services and the Department of Homeland Security.
And thank you, Mayor, for coming in with the comments on the statistics for both neighborhoods. I think that's, it was kind of important for a lot of people to hear, so we appreciate that.
I think so, too. Thank you.
A lot of misconceptions.
Well, you know, the neighborhood may look different.
Yeah.
But it doesn't mean it is different.
I honestly didn't know that the Lithuanian community was still in operations.
Oh, yeah.
In that room, and I appreciate you guys staying for the whole meeting, and thank you for your comments, and, you know, obviously, the city will do what we need to, to make sure that, through your promise?
The Lithuanian community's always been and will always be very important to this city.
Thank you, Mayor. That's it for right now. Further questions? Alderman DGO Von Carlo?
Let Alderman Sherman go first if you want him, Mr. President. I just have a comment, so I don't have a question.
Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor. The scope of work that has been approved at the original funding level, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I grew up in the Brooklyn neighborhood. I love that neighborhood. I love the Lithuanian neighborhood. Lisa Velez got me involved in being active in the community, so me being here is in direct relation to me living in that neighborhood. We had city employees, were they doing work at the facility or inspecting? Just to clarify, because...
Initially, city employees were doing work, and then, once we got the clean bill of health for the building and the structure of the building, we started to, and working through the Department of Administrative Services, we started to do some work, knowing that, well, first of all, there was a lot of cleanup to do. The building had been empty for a long time. Our guys have been in there doing that. Once we came to terms, there was some blood, sweat, and tears put into the place. Don't misunderstand me. A lot of blood, sweat, and tears to get the building, you know, ready for the real work, and the real work is underway, because we came to an agreement in principle with the terms and conditions of the lease, if that's answered, if I answer your question correctly.
Has it been unused since it was a swing school for Duggan?
I can't answer that. I don't know that it has, it's been unused. Yes, sir. Yeah. City put a big investment in that building, and through the State Board of Ed, too. State put a big investment in the building when it was swing space. We put an all-new kitchen in there and made the metal, the health code, you know, so everything in there is metal, and, you know, so a lot of that is already done. There's coolers and things like that, ovens, they're not, they're warmers to keep the food warm. There'll be no cooking there. The food comes in, it's already made. You just put it in there to keep it warm till the kids are ready to be served. All that stuff has already been in there.
You mentioned earlier this evening a particular building that the city would not be utilizing at all during this. Is that going to remain on the lease? And if it does, if something happens with something in that building, whether it be a furnace, a busted window, an AC unit, are we going to be, okay, because it says that we're responsible for making repairs in the lease?
For the, my understanding, I don't have an economy, is for the property that we occupy. We have no plans to occupy that building. So, if you would, and I actually, since you brought it up and thinking about it and listening to Linus and the rest of these great people, I think we'll work that arrangement out with the legal people tomorrow.
I'd feel more comfortable.
The Archdiocese, we will. We're not going to be on the hook for that building if we're not using it.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions? Do you want to go, or do you want to? Alderman Nujame?
Just to double-check, there's a new roof that the archdiocese had put on the building just this current year, correct?
Yes.
And a couple of months ago?
Yes.
Okay. Obviously...
They paid for it.
Okay.
Well, I don't know who paid for it now. I'm afraid to say.
The city did pay for it.
We didn't pay for it.
Okay. We're responsible.
And it's got a 20-year warranty, I know that. And it's not leaking, and we've had a lot of rain.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Alderman DGO Von Carlo?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I just want to say, since 2015 campaign and going to East Mountain meetings and talking to the residents, the biggest request from the residents of East Mountain, the biggest question was, when are we going to get our school? When will we get Wendell Cross K through eight? From that 2015 on, I believe it was one of our biggest priorities, to get the school built. I, myself, and Alderman Sherman were put on the building committee. I got to be honest with you, the first couple of initial buildings did not actually, the plans did not actually fit what we needed. The rebuild with the students there was not a great idea, and I think the two classrooms per K through eight did not resolve the overcrowding in the schools. I understand the parents' concerns tonight. I have full confidence in the mayor, I have full confidence in the city, that they will be addressed. I have two children. I send them to schools where I believe they're safe, but in this day and age, we cannot guarantee anything, but I believe the city will do everything it can to keep the children safe. Reality is, we have a chance to build a $46 million school with 76% funding from the state, and if we fail to get it done, I know that you don't want to hear the timeline, Mr. Mayor, but if we do fail to get this project started, shovels in the ground by October 1st, we'll have to start the whole process over again. And I truly believe, if we do not vote this in and get this school started, we have let down more parents and more future students of Wendell Cross in the future. So, thank you.
Can I respond to that, Mr. President?
Of course you can.
So, and I really am glad you brought that up, because it's better coming from you than me. But, the truth is, is bipartisan. Alderman DGO on Von Carlo, pretty good, right? Alderman Sherman, Alderman Kula, Representative Cummings, Democrats, Republicans, listening to their constituents, we want a school. I have to tell you, I was on the school board in 2009 and 10. I'd been to Wendell Cross. I was there as a police officer. I hadn't been there for a long time. I went up there when you guys asked me to go up and look at the place, and I almost fell down because the roof was leaking, and I was like, it's just, you can't even make this stuff up. And so, you guys and girls made it your priority that this is what you wanted, and East Mountain, if you recall, was always supposed to get a pre-K to eight school, and it just didn't materialize for a bunch of reasons, some of which had nothing to do with the city and everything to do with the state of Connecticut, because there was some real funding issues, if you remember, during some of those years. You made it a priority, we got it done, and then this is where I really am very proud of Dr. Ruffin. So, you know, Dr. Verna Ruffin comes in here, doesn't know the landscape, doesn't know anybody, studies, has been involved in school construction projects her whole life as a superintendent, looks at this space, walks this space, doesn't understand how we can guarantee, absolutely guarantee, a child's safety with heavy trucks, heavy equipment, blasting, all this going on. She says, whoa, timeout. We can't do this. We cannot keep these kids on site if we're going to be doing this kind of work. As you remember, the scope was 50% demo, 50% new. She had courage, stand up and say, we got to refigure this. At the same time, the student enrollment figures were being contemplated, because we spent $40 million building Carrington School, and within a year, we outgrew it. And so, Dr. Ruffin, to her credit, studied the Carrington School District, the number of students, Wendell Cross, looked at the displacement from the Wendell Cross kids that should be in the building into Jenna Rally, into Chase, into Gil Martin, and said, why aren't we building three classes per grade? And so, that, right, do it right, you might as well do it right. And so, that's how we got to where we are today. A lot of the East Mountain parents had expressed frustration that it's taken so long. Well, it's taken so long for those reasons, and it's taken so long because we don't control the State Board of Education or the Department of Administrative Services, but I will tell you, the latter, the Department of Administrative Services, has been unbelievably responsive to us in every level of this project. So, that's a very good reminder of why this project has gone the way it is. And our thought was, and Dr. Ruffin's thought was, look, you had a big problem at Duggan, you tried to keep a portion of that building for a lot of good reasons, but that building had, you know, serious plumbing, electrical issues, and we just settled that lawsuit that went on for 10 years. And she said, why not try to take as much of the building down as we can, because quite frankly, it's horrendous, and why not relook at it? And so, you know, to her credit, this is going to be an amazing school when it's done. And, you know, yeah, it's taken a little bit more time, but the reality is, it's going to allow the people who pay taxes in that district to send their children to that school, that beautiful newly-built school, instead of seeing their kids get on buses to Jenna Rally and Chase and Gil Martin. And she's 100% right. And so, I'm really proud of the fact that she put the brakes on, honestly. Thank you.
Any further questions? Then, with that, the motion is to approve the lease as presented with the red lines, but I'm going to ask just one more time, if you're going to make adjustments to this multifamily house, do we need to allow that flexibility to make that, or can that be addressed within the existing language in the lease?
I think we should allow you, give us the flexibility, because to me, you've asked it twice.
I know, and I just want to make sure that tomorrow, we don't find out that we can't approve the lease, you can't sign the leases approved because of the changes you want to make. So, what I would then entertain would be a motion to amend the underlying motion to have us approve the redlined lease amendment that was presented tonight, subject to such changes to address the concerns with the multifamily house as the mayor deems appropriate, working with the Corporation Council.
So move.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Lopez, then, is there any discussion? And the motion on the floor is to amend the underlying motion to approve the lease agreement as presented with the red lines, subject to such changes as the mayor feels are appropriate with respect to the multifamily building. A yes vote will be to approve the amendment, a no vote will be to disapprove the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the amendment is approved. The motion now before the board, then, would be to approve the lease agreement with the red lines and subject to such changes as the mayor deems appropriate with respect to the multifamily building, working with the Corporation Council. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, a yes motion would be to approve the lease as so described, and no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries in the committee, the whole, we'll do it again as the consent counter, but we should be good. So, with that, the motion, as Linda gave it to us tonight, redlined with your ability to make further changes with that multifamily building.
And for all of your information, we have already made arrangements to meet with this community tomorrow morning, and we will address their concerns, and then we will report back to you on the resolution.
What the changes are. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, then with that, we need to go to new business, item number three, which is a proposed amended ordinance to reduce the number of days for which trash and recycling receptacles can be left at the curb from five to two, and to amend the definition of blighted premises to include premises with two or more unregistered boats of a variety of registrations, or unregistered boats of a variety of registrations, of which is required, collateral or collapsing or collapsing retaining walls, partly fallen gutters, fire damaged structures, and overgrown brush reaching streets or sidewalks. The, because it's a proposed ordinance, the appropriate motion would be to set a public hearing. The timeline would require us to do it no sooner than the June 24th meeting at 6:55 PM. Alderman Brunelli?
So move.
Second.
Motion having made to set a public hearing for June 24th at 6:55 PM, by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Item number four is down as an approval, but actually, the appointments of the Board Housing Authority is simply the mayor's appointment, so those should really be received and placed on file without objection. on file and without objection. We'll just change number four to RFP. Number five, we've just dealt with. Number six is a contract with, with funding administered by the state of Connecticut, with no fundraising, ratcheting requirements from the city. The contract is for the HIV prevention program. The amount is $558,000. The period is January 1, 2019, through January 31, 2021. It's a three-year contract to provide testing, education, outreach to high-risk individuals. This program will also provide linkage to services for people living with HIV and AIDS. Payment for the funds will be made to the city upon receipt of the monthly financial expenditure reports. I would entertain a motion to approve item number six.
Motion approved, item number six.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Item number 7A is a motion, is the appointment of Alexa Estrada from 44 Fox Street in Waterbury to be a member of the Board of Public Health for the unexpired term of Michelle Golden, which should be from May 20, 2019, through December 31, 2019. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, motion not to disapprove, the name's in item seven.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez, not to disapprove. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. With respect to item number 7B, it is the appointment of Betty A. Johnson as a commissioner on the Zoning Board of Appeals, the term commencing May 20, 2019, and expiring on December 31, 2022. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, motion not to disapprove, item 7B.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Lopez, not to disapprove, item 7B. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. And I think that's it that's in here, yes.
Did we read the names off on number four?
We changed it to just receive and place on file. The one change on there, so it's Dr. Robert Corzio, Nicholas Tatro, and it should be Brian T. McNellis to the board of the three names. But again, that's, it's just information, receive and place on file. With that, I would entertain a motion that we come out of the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we'll return to the regular order of business. We will recess very briefly for the Finance Committee to deal with the Standing Committee report, so they can do that, and then we'll come back and we'll finish up with the consent calendar. Thank you.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Standing. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $10,636.28, submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
All right. With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item one, receive and place on file. Item number two is receive and place on file. Item number three is to set a public hearing, June 24th at 6:55 PM. Item number four is receive and place on file. Item number five is to approve. Item number six, new business is to approve. Item number 7A and 7B are on consent, not to disapprove. And old business item number four is on consent to approve. We spent a lot of time talking about them, so I won't go into detail as to what they are. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion approved, the consent calendar as read.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli to prove the consent calendar is read, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve it, and a no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the consent calendar is approved as read. With that, the chair would recognize Alderman DGO Von Carlo for the standing committees.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $10,636.28, submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Kula, seconded by Alderman Weaver. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries. The refunds are approved. With that, we, it should be on old business, and it did not carry over, which would be the, the budget deliberations which are on there. But we do need, and we had mentioned it the last time, we need to do the second public hearing. We typically do vote on that, so I would, at this point, just entertain a motion that we set the second charter-required public hearing for January 3, 2019, 6:30 PM in these chambers.
June 3.
I'm sorry, June, June 3, June 3. June 3, 2019, in these, in these chambers at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Motion having been made, is there a second?
I apologize. What time?
6:30.
Motion to approve the date.
Okay, the motion having been made, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The public hearing is set, and the clerk will do the appropriate notices. And then, we don't need to vote on it tonight, it's not on the agenda, but I will just give you the heads up again, that at 7 o'clock that night, or immediately following the public hearing, whichever is later, we will have a special meeting to discuss the Wendell Cross Construction Manager-at-Large contract that we will be getting. And then we will also have a special meeting at 6:30 on June 6 to take up both the operational and the capital budgets. And the plan would be to vote on them that evening. So we'll get those notices out for those two special meetings as well. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remind all members of the board and the public, next Sunday, we'll, Waterbury Veterans Memorial Committee will be putting on our annual Memorial Day Parade, staging in the usual area on Freight Street, kicking off at 1 o'clock. And hopefully, you can all join us. Thank you.
Anything else? Alderman, I mean, Mr. Goff.
Thank you. Everyone here, May 30, a week from this Thursday, 5:30, there'll be a stage out in front of the Chase Building. There'll be 2,500 young athletes for Kids Marathon, so I'd love to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.